One time or something. I don't remember what it was, but carpet. Yeah.
We got the clock back on the wall. That was missing for a while.
Big enough to read from here.
All right. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody. This is the July 27th Public Hearing Planning Commission Public Hearing. Can I start with roll call, please? Start with you, Gavin.
Gavin O'Toole.
Eric Hudson.
Richard Levy.
Bryan Adams.
Rob Rusher.
Ryan Swintec.
Great. Before we begin agenda items, is there anyone in person or online that has any public comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Not a lot of faces to choose from. We'll move on to our next, our, our items for recommendation to council tonight. First one is PL 2023 0032 Mid Valley Housing. I was curious both to staff and applicant, would you like to do one presentation regarding both? Since the second one is, is just the preliminary plat for it, or would you like to keep them completely separate?
Um, I think. I mean, happy to do either. I've prepared two different presentations. They're a little, they're a little different. The development plan has new information for you. The preliminary plat, there is some, um, a little bit of repeat from an application you've seen within the last six months.
We can keep it separate. It's fine.
However, the applicant wants to do it, however.
Is that okay with you?
Chair wants to do it, I can accommodate.
Two totally separate ones. That sounds great.
Yeah.
Okay.
There'll be a little overlap, but I think that's okay.
Well, we'll start with the development plan one, and when you're ready, we'll take the applicant presentation.
Thank you all for the time tonight. Probably the first time I've been the first person on the agenda.
You get to warm up the crowd tonight.
So early. Yeah. You don't have like some Marriott or something to like beat you guys down.
Hey, Jason, I don't mean to be picky, but just to make sure that on Zoom they can hear you. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. No problem. All right. I'm Jason Peaslee, the Executive Director of the Amphi Valley Housing Authority. I'm really pleased to present to you sort of the next project in the portfolio for, for the Amphi Valley Housing Authority, the Mid Valley Project. And, and so I want to get into this just a little bit, talking about the housing landscape that we have in our community right now. So we know because of the work that we've been doing on Brown Ranch, work that we've been working on with the city, that we currently need 1,400 units to, to meet our current housing demand. And that's a huge swath of, of units that cover a significant income band. This project has a, a cover some of that, but not the entirety of the 1,400 unit deficit. And I have a little bit of information there just about like what the average price of homes are. Now, I stole this from Derek's website. So if, if there's any questions you can ask him or he can call John and get the information. But, but I think it's, it's important to understand where our current market is as far as it relates to for sale product. One of the things that's really unique about the Mid Valley Project is the first time in, in a long time that the Housing Authority has been able to do a for sale product. And so that's really important for us to diversify the product delivery. And so looking at average condo prices and steamboat, almost a million dollars, townhomes, a million and a half, single family homes, 1.6. You go out to Hayden and Oak Creek, Peabody, Giampa, you're over 400,000. Those were from 2022. I don't know where the market is today, whether that's up or down or flat. But that's a, that's an indication of sort of where the market's at. And when we're talking about our local workforce, which is who we're trying to serve. These are really out of, out of reach for most folks. And so what we're looking to do is to provide housing at those kind of moderate income levels for both renters and people looking to purchase homes. And so that's why we're, we're doing this Mid Valley development. So to give you a little bit of sense of where this is, it's right by what used to be Staples is now the UC Health Urgent Care. We're bordered on two sides by the core trail or the core trail alternative on the, on the east side. On the west side, we have the, the the train tracks. And so this site is, is probably one of the largest infill sites that exists still in the city yet to be developed. And we acquired it just, just about two years ago, thanks to our donation to the Housing Authority to, to build more housing for our locals. And so we've worked over the course of those last two years with our development team with the city to, to bring about this project. So the site plan that you see here essentially includes an extension of Mid Valley Drive to the south and, and four buildings. So the two larger ones, Buildings Four and Building Three are a rental product. So it's 150 rental units. And then Buildings Two and Buildings One are the for sale component of the project, and that's 84 units. I have some, a bit of information about the, the plat. Not necessarily important for, for right now, so we can pause on that. One of the, one of the kind of unique parts of this is that, you know, with 324 or 234 units have a significant amount of parking that's needed to meet the demand. So with this particular product, we actually have essentially a podium with which the buildings sit on top of and below that is a significant amount of parking. Our goal when we started out was, was not to have a site full of parking, although that's sort of where we ended up. Is, is to, you know, take best advantage of density as we could. And, and to park it such that it's obviously not causing a problem for the neighboring community and things like that. And so placing parking underneath the buildings was a, was a key strategy for us being able to fit everything onto this site and be able to preserve this sort of south end of the site here. That's the kind of wetlands component of the site. And there's kind of an upland area in the middle that's going to be come a bit of a little pocket park. So as it relates to the development plan itself, there are, there are a couple of variances, the sort of standard variances that you've seen from almost every Housing Authority project related to ground force ceiling height transparency, building width or building length. And so we're working within sort of the same zone districts of which we've worked in in the past and, and trying to design a variety of housing types or product mix, but still running into the exact same variances that we've seen in the past. I've read through the staff report. I totally agree with all of the analysis of the variance criteria and the conditions of approval. We're, we're comfortable with all of those. So if you have any questions for us on the particular development, happy to. Happy to do that. The last thing I want to talk about is just sort of the AMI targets that we're looking at for this project. So we are looking at kind of a mixture of 80 to 140% of the median income. And so what that means is so for a household of four, your median income is right around 100,000. And, and so we're looking at, you know, households making considerably lower than that, 20% lower or a little bit higher. So we're looking at, at, you know, sort of your professionals entry level, professional positions, even kind of higher up in your professional positions. And, and that's what in the world that we work in is, is often described as the missing middle. And so they, they make too much money to afford the capital A affordable housing that's subsidized with federal tax credits to a significant degree. But they're priced out of that market that we kind of looked at before. And so for us, hitting this middle income target is really critical, especially on the for sale side. And to that extent, we've received a $4 million grant from the state of Colorado to help reduce the cost of those for sale units so that we can be delivering as much affordability as possible. So if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you very much. And Kelly, do you have the presentation as well?
Yes, I do. Kelly Douglas, Senior Planner. This is a development plan, conditional use and major variance application. The subject property is 10.9 acres and it's located just south of Mid Valley, west of Highway 40. It's currently undeveloped and there are wetlands on the site. As background, the site has received multiple subdivision and development approvals since the 1990s. Plats were recorded in 1998 and 2001 that have created the subdivision layout that you see today. However, no development approval has come to fruition. As you can see, it's vacant. With this application, the applicant's proposing to develop a multiple family housing project on the subject property. It is slated to contain 234 units in four buildings. Building one and two contain the 42 deed restricted condominium units each that Jason described. Building three and four contain a total of 150 rental units, 63 and 87 units respectively. All four buildings contain a mix of one, two and three bedroom units. With respect to use, multiple family residential use is proposed. Although multiple family use is limited use in the CC Zone District, the multiple family conditional use request is a request attributed to the proposal, not complying with the use standard in the CDC 301 B2A, requiring that multiple family not occur in the pedestrian active building frontage. Per Section 300 D2, when use standards are not complied with, it's processed as a conditional use. So that's the reason that's included with this proposal. As far as parking requirements for this project are based on the one space per deed restricted affordable housing dwelling unit standard. So that's for units below, at 120% AMI and below. As well as multiple family residential standards for units above 120% AMI. 294 parking spaces are required for the standards, per the standards that I just mentioned. 390 24 hour spaces and 16 on street spaces. So no overnight parking in those 16 are proposed. So that's a total of 406 and these comply with CDC standard. This overall complies with CDC standards. As an update, there, there was an analysis of this provided in your staff report in response to the development plan criteria for approval. The number of affordable units has actually increased by 18. Learned this from the applicant since the time the port, report was written. So that was, it was originally 130, 132. Now there's 150 affordable units. So 120 AMI and less. So, and, and just a little more context on that, the mix of affordable units versus like typical multiple family residential units, it can shift. There is leeway in light of the, the parking provided beyond the CDC minimum, th- this is a limiting factor. It could potentially be a limiting factor, and this is something the applicant is aware of. So as that shifts, we'll run these calculations and make sure, but yeah, the parking meets the standards in the CDC. So regarding site development, there's four major variances requested. Variance number one is to CC minimum ground floor height. The standard's 14 feet. The applicant has proposed about 13. Staff supports this request on the grounds that the applicant is proposing a residential development, no intention to convert these to a commercial use. And the intent of the standard strict application is not appropriate for this type of development. Variance number two is to Section 437 E1, and that standard requires multiple family residential buildings not exceed 160 feet in length. The applicant is proposing buildings from about 185 feet to about 394 feet in length. Staff supports this request because the proposed buildings comply with applicable guidelines and therefore achieve, achieve a result that's equal to the code standard. Variance number three is to multiple family residential transparency standards. Staff also supports this request because it complies with applicable guidelines and achieves a result that's equal. And then variance number four, that's to the roof form standards for multiple family residential buildings. The standard requires that roof pitches should be between 512 and 1212. This, with this proposal, the applicant would like to include flat and 212 roof forms as well. Staff supports the request on the grounds that it, you know, complies with applicable guidelines again, achieves an equal result. And also recognizes that the proposal provides a transition to adjacent flat roof forms on commercial buildings to the north. Overall, we find that the proposal complies with the conditional use, development plan and major variance criteria for approval. So we're also recommending approval of the project overall with conditions. And staff has not received any written public comment in support or opposition to the proposal. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from commissioners to staff or the applicant?
I'll go for the applicant. Jason, to remind us, when you say your targets are, I, I assume the rentals are all the, below 120% AMI and for purchases above 120% AMI? Or what's that breakdown on that?
Yeah, let me, let me get that for you. So the, the rentals do go up to 140% AMI is a and, and they go as low as 80% AMI. And, and so one of the things that we've learned through our development of other properties, particularly the sunlight crossings development is that, is that we need to be including a lot of different stratification in our developments. And so as an example, sunlight crossings is 80% and 120. And so we're looking at, we, we decided through this project, learning from that experience to provide 80, 90, 100, 120, 140. And so the, the stratification allows for us to kind of fit with people's incomes a little more, you know, you the threshold is hard. And so once you go over that, if you're moving from 80% AMI to 120, that's a big leap. That's and, and so that's why we're doing all of those various tiers. And, and as it relates to the 140% AMI, this is just sort of a recognition of the fact that like the, the problem has continued to creep up the income level. And so the state has actually adjusted their own funding model to allow for rural resort communities to fund projects up to 140% AMI. So the city's definition at 120 is probably 15 years old. I think. And so, uh, you know, it's, it's essentially sort of the new paradigm that you know, people that need housing support is continuing to move up that income range.
I guess the question I had is when you say you have these target ranges, are the, are the actual rental prices and purchase prices determined by the individual's actual income or by 120% AMI?
So it, it depends on the the type of product. So there's kind of two examples. So on the, on the rental side, we sort of work in tranches. So 80% AMI has a particular income limit. And there's a, we can pull it up if you need to see it, but on Colorado Housing and Finance Authority's website, they have what is AMI for that year? And then what is the maximum rental income or rental rate for a one bedroom at 80% AMI, a one bedroom at 100% AMI, one bedroom at 120? And then you can extrapolate from there if you have some, you know, if you have 90 or if you have 140 or 70 or however you want to do it. And so that's those, those rental rates are set for that unit. So all 80% units at a given size, say a two bedroom are all the same. And then the people that qualify just need to make less than the income limit, and that's a dependent upon their household size. And so it becomes a bit of a, a kind of funky arithmetic, if that makes sense. So it's not, it's not as simple as saying, okay, you make $30,000 a year and we're going to charge you 30%. So your rent is 900. It's, it's, you know, do you make less than the income threshold? If so, here's the rent. And when you move up to that next tier, then the rent goes up a little bit as well because that, that sort of maximum income now step establishes the new sort of rental cap, if you will. And so that's part of the reason why we wanted to add more stratification so that as people top out of, say they come in and I think they're 80% AMI, turns out they're 87. There's a 90% unit for them or 100% unit for them. And so we're, we're trying to tailor the different tiers of income on the rental side to what the individuals make. On the for sale side, similarly, we will, we will price all of the, say like two bedroom, 80% units equally. And then we will qualify the individual family to make sure that they make less, but the, the factors that go into that are household size and what their sort of underwriting standards are for their particular loan. So whereas the kind of rule of thumb around affordability is 30% of income, these programs are largely designed to get you close to 30%. But don't always achieve that scenario. And so we're, the things that we can control within that is not setting rents at the absolute maximum for the AMI. So as a partner in the deal, we have control over making those types of decisions and utilizing our ownership status and our economics in the deal to drive down those prices. And so there are some factors outside of our control related to that, particularly on the for sale side, interest rates. What, you know, people's buying power may be. And so from that standpoint, we're, you know, we're kind of waiting to see what the environment is that we're inheriting when we sell these units. But the goal is, is to hit those AMI marks to, you know, to the best of our ability and deliver, you know, as much affordability as we can. And, and because we're investing a significant amount of resources from our standpoint, you know, we have a, a $4 million grant from the from the state. We're contributing the land. We're contributing additional capital. We're able to buy that down. We know we can buy it down to some level right now. And, and that's the, the AMI mixture that you see that Kelly kind of analyzed the parking based on. And then our goal is to utilize some additional capital if need be, or some of our economic return on the project to buy it down further. If that makes sense.
I guess at least one to a statement that obviously it's not obviously, but more than likely, most people will be paying more than the 30% target for 30%, because unless they're right at that 80% AMI, they're probably going to be, they'll be, they will be below that. And to what degree they go above 30% is a variable.
Yeah. I mean, it, hitting that exact 30% mark is, is pretty difficult. The goal is, is to get as close to it as possible. And, and the thing that we're trying to avoid in, in many, in many of these situations, we're not dealing with like slightly cost burdened households. We're dealing with severely cost burdened households that are spending 40 to 50% of their income on housing. And so moving to 33% or 35% is a huge adjustment in the right direction for them. Maybe not exactly to that 30%, though.
Thank you. Other questions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Question for the applicant. And maybe this is obvious to some. So you're talking about pedestal parking. Is this, is underneath the building? At ground level? So that they just drive in and the building starts above the parking garage?
More, more or less. Yeah. It'll be a little bit, I guess, sunk underneath. Depending on the, depending on where you are on the building, because they're.
Yeah.
So.
And so are there residences at ground level?
No.
Okay.
The, there is some office use at the ground level and some kind of entryway lobby areas at ground level, but the vast majority of it is that basically the, the covering of the parking.
And is the covering of the parking area? It's not glass, right?
No.
Yeah.
No, no, no.
It's like, but.
There is some, there is actually some, some transparency to provide natural light into that area. But we, we tried to kind of dress it up as best as possible. Trying to bring down a lot of the elements of the fenestration of the upper part of the buildings down through the, the podium parking to kind of keep that, make it essentially feel like you're, you have one continuous building instead of this sort of like wrap. And then the building sitting on top of this podium.
Okay. Other questions? Ellie, about the parking. This zone district is not the one that the min is the max, correct?
It actually is, but that only applies to commercial uses.
Okay.
Residential still same thing. It's residential still minimum.
Confusion.
Yeah.
And so it would have been a problem if it was commercial, but because it's residential, then going way over the, what would be maximum is no longer a problem. Is that, am I putting that correctly?
In your example, it wouldn't necessarily be a problem. You know, in that, in that circumstance, where we have commercial uses in these zone districts where the minimum is the maximum. Sure, the minimum is one, I suppose. But in those circumstances, applicants propose how much parking they need. So it would just be a different calculation if there were commercial uses. It'd be kind of like broken out for commercial, the, the minimum or the maximum needed. And then the, the minimum for residential would be calculated the same way you see for this report.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Yeah, Steph, if you could explain a little bit about the building mass requirements there. What was it? 126 feet long is the longest a building can be?
The standard is 160 feet.
160 rather, sorry.
And applicant is proposing buildings between 185 and 394 feet.
Right. And what is the, what is the reasoning behind that restriction?
Oh, the intent behind the standard?
Yeah.
I think it's generally to limit the, the massing of buildings. There's not an explicit intent provided in the code, but we can looking at the standards, it, it just appears that it's trying to limit the size of large buildings in this area. This is a variance request, so we evaluate it on its own, you know, individually. And in this case, in light of all the circumstances, we, you know, we, we support this variance. But there's not an explicit purpose or intent provided in the code for me to reference for you.
Other questions?
This is for the applicant. And I apologize if this was covered, but I'm looking at the project narrative. And the intent for expedited review. For groundbreaking for summer twenty twenty three. Is is that still the current timeline or what's the proposed timeline?
Yeah, yeah, we're we're still planning on doing. Some overlock rating this this year, and so we actually have an approved preliminary plat number one. That allows us to do that. And so we'll probably get started. Maybe in the next couple of weeks on that is the ideal situation, which might actually happen before the council consideration of this project. But the idea is is that, yeah, we would be breaking ground and doing some site work this year. As it relates to the hundred and sixty feet. I was on the planning staff when we wrote that standard and. I think Jonathan Spence and I just sort of like made something up. But the intent was to limit the massing of buildings. And so the idea being that you want to break up. The the look of a large building, especially when it's adjacent to the road. And so it's either shrink the building or add as the the code directs more sort of articulation. Fenestration, material changes, those types of things. So the intent was to not have. Basically, like the back of. Back of Walmart. I think that was the intent at the time was to like avoid those like gigantic blank. Faces of buildings adjacent to the. Adjacent to the road. And now there's, you know, huge pine trees covering it up, but like you can. From a staff level. But, you know, as far as the hundred and sixty feet, that was, I would say, an unscientific number that we kind of pulled out.
Right. Now, thank you. I mean, I'm just looking at the size of the buildings. None of them are even. Well, one is close to the hundred and sixty feet, but they're also five and six stories tall. Which creates some really large mass buildings, and then there's a bunch of them together. I'm just curious about the the thought behind that massing because it seems like there's going to be a significant amount here.
Yeah, I would add just in the picture that popped up on the screen, or actually, here it is. Yeah, the initial plan set. It's just intimidating looking. I don't know if that that's a personal opinion, so no. There's no question. I I suspect some trees and landscaping will help a lot.
Let's jump back into questions for the time being, but then definitely let's get into discussion too. Other questions for now? Yeah, you have one?
Sure. Other justification for the flat roofs, you talk about some peak roofs and using the flat roofs to. Collect snow from the. Ones that do have a slope. Any other reasoning?
I I mean, I think just primarily to reduce overall mass. So, you know, if you were to have a five twelve or twelve twelve pitch on on these buildings, they would be. Thirty feet taller, something like that. So it's. The the purpose there being to not kind of. Be even more intimidating. Sorry.
Other questions?
Yeah. Seeing as we're on that, the topic of what these are looking like, also all of the glazing is under standards as well. And looking at some of the design, the layout, it's kind of hard to squeeze in additional windows in a lot of these. Is that correct assumption or what do you? What's the reasoning for such low glazing?
Well, so the those glazing standards are kind of, I'd say, more along the lines of a commercial expectation. But the the glazing that we've, I mean, we've never had a project that met the glazing standards of the city. And and so there's kind of two things. One is from the energy efficiency and building envelope standpoint, your weakest points are your penetrations. And so we wanted to. Be, you know, strategic about those. And then it's, I mean, it's really difficult to meet the the full transparency standard. It's. You know, it'd be like floor to ceiling windows. And so that's really not something that we can accommodate in the development. The the types of development that we're working on, especially when we're trying to keep a tight building envelope. So from that, that's really the the reason why we're not meeting the the standard is is primarily to. Make as efficient building as possible. Obviously, natural light coming in is really important, and we have what I think is an appropriate amount of. Of windows and size of windows, but there's there's no way you're going to meet. The glazing standards with what I think is kind of a modest amount of window.
Right, natural light is absolutely important to health as well as. You know, aesthetics of the building.
Other questions?
I have a question. Just given the density of this and how much snow we get, is there a high risk with the amount of snow on the roofs and it falling and potentially crushing someone? Or was that considered in these roofs to make sure that minimizes like a massive buildup and then it falls?
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, there's kind of two two approaches to that. One is just your roof design as far as where it's intended to shed and where it's intended to hold snow. And then secondly is, you know, these and these buildings end up having heat trace all along the eve. So that you don't get that buildup of of ice and snow. That could fall. And then there's also some flatter areas below some of the areas that might fall that would that would catch that. And so that's a significant consideration when designing the roof layout. But ultimately, our goal, generally speaking, is to capture the snow, hold it there, and then use the heat trace to just like. You know, make sure we're not having ice dams and things like that.
Cool, thanks.
Any other questions? Jason, did you work with? Young tracks because they they lost their parking, which was technically on your property on that there east side, right? Which makes sense, and I and we talked about that at your preliminary plat a while back. I see how how there's kind of a new curve within their parking. Did you work that out with them? And and there's kind of a, again, I know that most of it is your property, but is there kind of a a joint solution there or how'd you come to that?
Yeah, yeah, we've we've worked really closely with with Young Tracks, both on the design of this, how it impacts their pickup. Drop off. Other considerations of just having, you know. What was essentially nothing next to their. Their daycare and now something. And so, yeah, we've worked with them, the idea being that those. The those four spots that are adjacent on Mid Valley Drive are likely to become some function of pickup drop off. For the for them. And then we're we're working with them sort of independently to try to figure out how we can help redesign their. Their parking and flow and those types of things so that we can make sure that they're still able to do. Their activities in a normal way, understanding that they were essentially squatting on our property. But it, you know, we recognize that's an important part of this community. We want to be good neighbors. We don't want to put them in a bad spot, so we're we're spending some of our resources to help them kind of redesign and rethink some of that that area.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions?
I'll go with staff. I know we've talked about this one. Forever, but I mean, how does staff? Is staff working to? Change the code on glazing requirements? I mean, every single application, not every single application, every application we see seems to have blazing standards. And we keep saying it's fine, it's fine without any justification. And real understanding of, like you said, what's the intent of blazing and, you know. We've also heard other stories of, well, you could use better better glass that would be, you know, you'd have big windows and really, really expensive glass that would meet. Engineer environmental and energy code standards. Where is staff going with this? Because. It's getting old.
Great question. So the transparency standards are in the community design standards. And that is, we have are under contract with Code Studio to review and rewrite those. This year, second half of this year, we'll kick that project off, so we will definitely be reviewing those. With our work that we've done so far with Code Studio with regard to the T and D zone update. What we've learned from them is that. It may not necessarily be the percentage, the actual standard itself that is miscalibrated, but rather how we measure it. So we're kind of already learning some things. But yeah, we anticipate that that will be fully reviewed and. Rewritten in some manner that we can feel confident. That the standard is reasonable, it's what we expect from development. Not saying we'll never see another variance request again, or potentially even grant one, but you know, I think we'll feel more confident once we go through that review of the design standards.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? Nope, seen none. Doesn't appear we have much of a public comment tonight. And I don't see any online either. So we will skip public comment and unless, Jason, unless you have any final. Comments?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, or Kelly?
Nothing to add.
Welcome to commissioners for discussion and emotion.
Yeah, I'll start off. It's nice to see development moving forward on this. Piece of land that's been planned and. Discussed for years and it's a good looking project. I kind of see now when I can zoom in on the. Plan set, I now see the parking garages underneath there. I can't really get down to the bottom. Be having some technical difficulties, but overall, I definitely like the plan as always a little concerned with traffic, but that just seems to be my pet peeve. And I'm sure you guys have studied that intensely with. C dot. And the feds, so happy to see this. Thanks for working on it.
I'll move to approve PL twenty twenty three zero zero three two and. The twelve conditions of approval in the packet.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Second. Motion and second. Any other discussion?
I mean, I think staff covers the variances pretty well. I think the. As as was noted, the the length of the buildings and the mass is kind of up there, but I see the the biggest building looks like it's on the. Core trail side, not on the highway side, so doing some effort to hide the impact of that from the public right of way. Maybe not from the bike path. So building massing, I kind of live with that. Your intent is good, affordable housing is. A huge goal of ours, that's probably more, which is better articulated than our reason for minimizing massing. I already talked about glazing, we've been hearing that one forever, so I could live with that. Roof forms. Would it have been better to be a smaller building with? Pitched roof. You're surrounded by flat roofs, the the commercial building. On Mid Valley and the UC Health Building are both flat roofs, so it actually matches the surrounding area. So I'm okay with that. I'm missing one or two variances, but otherwise I disagree with staff's interpretation.
Height, you didn't speak to nothing.
I don't know, it's not a commercial building. You say it's never going to be a commercial building, so there's no reason for it to be taller.
My major concern is the the massing of it. Yeah, they're long buildings, but they're also tall. And there's also nothing tall around there as well. I think two stories is the max. Of that area. That's my biggest concern is, you know, when this is built, how big is that going to be? You know, and compare that what is even across the highway from that is still max is only a couple of stories. So the massing is a big concern for me. Flat roofs, glazing, all that kind of stuff. I'm just like, yeah, you know. You know, there's windows sufficient. Doesn't meet the standard, but it's close. Height of the ground or not a concern, it's garage anyhow, as long as cars can fit. That's what you want.
I'll I'll jump in. I mean, first of all, I. I'll cough instead. First of all, I love the design, you know, in 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 general, I really like. Even though it's not part of our purview, I like where you're going with those different AMI breakdowns and kind of not having somebody at eighty one percent up at hundred and twenty percent. Portions. I mean, that's all, that's all brilliant. I think the parking underneath and kind of reducing how much parking is just outside that needs to be plowed, I think is great. I think the layout of it and how you're coming off of Mid Valley Drive is great. You know, the the infill park is kind of how I've been calling it, but you probably have a better name for it is. Is also great, and I understand the conditional use aspect that is the the fully. Residential as it relates to, again, Mid Valley being right there and that it is kind of a mixed use neighborhood, and I think that that was kind of a critical. Critical term. So all those things I think are great. And once we get to preliminary plat, we've already kind of talked about. You're sandwiched in with how much wetlands you're trying to and maybe needing to, but I'll say trying to protect as well. And so I understand that, you know, you could have split building four into two buildings, made them fit the, you know, hundred and sixty foot length. It would have cost more and there would have been less wetlands, and I understand the things that's that you were up against. That being said. I have some concerns about the massing as well, and when we do make a building that long. I want to make sure that it's it's mitigated in the in the way that it needs to be and in the way that the code allows it to be. In this case, I can tell that especially in buildings three and four, you have two very kind of distinct. Styles trying to make it look like really it's two buildings out of one in order to to kind of mitigate that. My big concern is the eastern side of building three. So that's the one, right, that's coming, it looks north and south on the plans we've been looking at tonight, but it's kind of really going east and west, right? And comes into then the southeast corner and the most visual aspect corner up against the highway. And in order to break it up from the other half of it, the western half, the entire building is an offset peak to a twelve slope and a one to twelve slope. And. I feel that when you apply the intense. Of both the roof. Slopes and massing. As well as the building length and the ways that you are to mitigate. Each if you're trying to to do that, I don't think that it's necessarily being done successfully. At this point, to me, it looks like a big green mass with an offset roof pitch, and that's a really big building for mostly, almost entirely. Green, one, one material with also just one roof shape. And and I have some real concerns for it because it's not even kind of hidden, it's not protected by trees, it's not away from the public right of way. So I'm having a real hard time with that specific one. I would, I would much rather see any other kind of solution that makes it look different from the western half, but. Mitigates it more, more materials, more than just the one roof shape, something like that. And I don't know if it's too far, if that ship has sailed too far to win over. One person's vote with some kind of change to just that portion's roof to try and mitigate that better or more materials, more glazing. More any of it, but just as is, I think that the three variances are combining themselves to something that's not successful enough. For me to vote yes on it tonight. That was a long sentence. That's what that's what I'd add. Any other discussion?
I'm going to share my opinion. I think that all the things that you raise, I very much agree with. However, I agree if we had endless urban sprawl, there isn't even, there is not only a lack of affordable housing. There is actually just a complete lack of housing, and so I do think that we need more dense. Large buildings that we can get more units into. So yes, in an ideal world, we don't have this big wall of a building. But I think the reality is is we don't have enough land, so the best thing is is to pack it as full of houses. And then deal with the issues that you're talking about down the road. Once people, I think people would rather deal with these issues and have a place to live than to deal with the problem of not having a place to live. So for this.
And just for and not to try and. Sway, right, because opinion, take your own and just back and forth for kind of clarifying my own is. I'm not suggesting I think they should get rid of units or get rid of.
I'm not suggesting I think they should get rid of units or get rid of building mass. I'm thinking they need to change up more materials on the outside and maybe different roof shapes so that there's a few more planes up top so that you keep those same number of units and it's not a big green mass on the corner of the property.
But in the light, like different, different materials means more expensive, no?
No. If it's painted green or blue or half of each, one pigment is not more expensive than the other.
Right.
I think there's a couple, couple of things we could work with staff on that's probably within substantial conformance. You know, for between now and building permit to clearly material changes are super easy, right? You know, either color or type. Making sure that they've matched, you know, the approved materials. That's certainly something that we can work on. The other that I would have to kind of go back and work with our design team on is as an example, we could flip the the treatment of the roofs between the sort of like western edge, which is further away from the road to the eastern side that's closer to the road than that. That other side has much more visual interest. And so we could explore that. I can't say without, you know, having our our full design team here to say whether we whether that's a simple change, like me not being an architect, I'm like, oh, yeah, it's super easy. But I have no idea like whether that's possible or not.
But I almost seems like it's a perfect enough rectangle that you could mirror it without anything else except for a mirroring exercise in the in the document set. And then you're right, then that the most exposed corner would have a lot more architectural interest. And then all the trees that are kind of breaking up the parking lot are starting to hide that western side. And you're really kind of solving the problem that I'm concerned about from the public right of way without even doing anything besides mirroring it.
I'm kind of looking at Steph. I don't know if that's a, that's probably not a substantial conformance item, making essentially a 180 degree turn of the building. At least from a roof standpoint, but I'm just trying to say.
In my, in my world where everybody agrees to what I say, right, which is a, it's a great world to be in, right? But in what my hope would be is that we could offer an additional condition that everybody would agree to that says flip it or address that concern. And then it could just be in the conditions and it wouldn't have to be a tabling and and, you know, renewed conversation kind of a thing. Cause I don't want to, even if the whole group agreed with me, you know, but a simple thing that says, hey, let's add this to it as well that you're going to flip it. Is that something that could be added? Is that something that could be worked out?
Yeah, I, I think there are probably some minor changes that could happen through the substantial conformance process, like Jason noted. I think planning commission could also, if applicant agreed, try to craft a condition. My concern would be what happens if there's complications in trying to achieve that condition? And then it's, you know, staff is trying to interpret sort of the intention of planning commission and deciding compliance with that condition would be my concern.
No, understood. So you don't see a way to do one at all?
I'm not saying that. I mean, I think it's if you have ideas for how to word the condition to make it clear as to what I mean, and if you're, if the rest of the planning commission is supportive and if the applicant agrees, because we can't condition anything without applicant agreement.
Could those changes made between this recommendation and the decision by a city council, since this is only a public hearing for recommendation? Does that make that any easier to accomplish?
Well, potentially, but still it's left to staff to be interpreting whether any changes made to the plan meets your intention of that condition. Because, you know, at some point we'd have to, Jason would have to provide updated plans. We'd have to review those prior to the council meeting and determine whether, you know, we're going to say they've done what plenty commission asked or not. Because it's not going to come back to you prior to council.
No, nor would I want. I mean, if we went this direction, nor would I want it to take up that much of your time either. Like it'd be great if this was just a change we could work out and then just gets made. You know, the exact, the exactness of how it gets changed. I mean, I like the mirroring idea. That was my, as an architect, my thought. And then in my massing model, you could just hit mirror and set up, set up your plan set again, and it, and it fits. But I mean, who knows if it fits into the site and what you guys have worked on? And if there's any steps in the building that get in the way of something, but.
I mean, we could, I cannot obviously agree to looking at the mirroring option and then working with staff on any other items that are within substantial conformance to try to add a little bit more visual interest if that is not possible. If that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I think I was going to say to move this on, it sounds like it's getting complicated that I'm not going to accept a friendly unless of course this vote fails, and then we can talk about other options.
Okay. Great. Any other discussion then?
Overall, I think it's a valuable project that provides a lot of benefit for the community. And I think part of, part of that is we don't have a lot of developments like this that have this kind of scale and mass. And so I think it is going to be a little bit of a shock for people when this goes into place, but I think it also meets a lot of positive elements. It is in a central corridor. It does provide that density. So if there are creative ways where we can minimize kind of that visual impact, I wouldn't want that to get in the way of this project because I think it is beneficial, but maybe we can look at creative ways of doing that.
Sounds great.
Communities definitely have those eyesore projects. And they tend to be bigger buildings like this. So whatever we can do to make the visual impact not as abrupt, the better, whether it's mirroring at changing materials, whatnot, because it is a big set of buildings.
Is anybody else is missing the chance to discuss? And I'll call for a vote on Rich's motion, starting with Gavin?
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
No?
No.
This is not with any special amendment, right?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, great. Then it passes. So then we will move on to agenda item number two, which is the preliminary, nope, the, yeah, the preliminary plat for this. Too many plats, preliminary plat number two, that's what it was. Jason, did you have much presentation to add for the preliminary plat application?
I have a picture.
Okay.
So I just kind of wanted to talk about how the the kind of two step that we're doing with the with the plat. So you guys saw a plat three, four months ago, preliminary plat that essentially established the two lots, the lot to the south or to the left on the picture, that is essentially the wetlands parcel and aligned it with the actual zoning that was sort of not correct to the lot lines. And and established one lot that's sort of the larger lot that's kind of hard to see because there's a ton of easements and stuff like that. This, this plat is intended to separate out the rental project and the for sale project. So right here is essentially where buildings one and two are, and this is where buildings three and four will be. And so the, the reason being is that they're, they're completely financed in different ways. And so there will be different partnerships created and we want to have different legal descriptions to encumber with, you know, loans and things like that. When we, we do our projects, they just don't necessarily mix all that well when you try to do it all with one particular parcel. So the reason why we're doing this preliminary plat is really just to make that make that subdivision. A lot of the stuff that we generally are going to, that that we've talked about before, wetlands impact was already approved in the previous preliminary plat, the easement for the extension of Mid Valley Drive. Where Mid Valley Drive is going after that, all of those things I think have been, have been worked out and I, you know, now that we're through with the development plan, they all kind of match, if that makes sense. And so one of the, one of the major changes that we did make was really designing Mid Valley Drive to be in a condition that can be taken over by the city in a, at a future time. And so the easement exists for the, the city for that to, to be a private street now, but can be convertible to right of way in the future. And then there's a blanket easement on the wetland parcel for the city to run the future extension of Mid Valley in whatever direction they need to go to get over to Mount Warner Road. And, and so what we're working to do is provide as much flexibility to the city as possible in the future for them to make that connection. And, and so we don't know exactly what that's going to look like. So we wanted to provide maximum flexibility. That's, that's all I wanted to kind of explain with this particular plat.
All right. Great. Thank you. Does staff have an application or presentation?
Yes, I do. Kelly Douglas, senior planner. This is a preliminary plat, a major variance application. It's the same subject property as the one preceding it, the application preceding it. I mentioned before, a previous approval, particular importance to this application is a 2006 zone map amendment. At that time, a previous property owner rezoned the subject property from RE1 to open space, OR and CC. The purpose was to limit development of environmentally sensitive, sensitive lands, as I understand it. The zoning was changed with ZMA 0607. A plat to separate the OR from the CC parcel was never completed though. So the property remains split zone in its current arrangement. Another relevant recent approval was the Mid Valley preliminary plat number one. That was PL 2022 0383. That was approved on April 4th of this year for a two lot subdivision to realign the lot lines with the zoning of the property that I just outlined, incorporate previously unplatted land and dedicate an access easement per the East Steamboat Springs US 40 Highway Access Control Plan. A final plat consistent with that application has not been recorded. So approval of this preliminary plat would replace the approval of PL 2022 0383. And therefore a lot of the aspects of this subdivision, including the variance requests are identical. So with this application, the applicant is proposing a three lot subdivision. Lot 1A is proposed to contain buildings one and two, where as Jason outlined, these units will be condominiums for ownership. Lot 1B is proposed to contain buildings three and four, and those units are to be for rent. The aspects of the proposal that are identical to the subdivision previously approved in April include the realignment of the lot lines with the zoning of the property, incorporating the previously unplatted land, dedicating an access easement, as well as, as I mentioned before, the two major variance requests usable lot area and circulation standards. Plat note 14 is new with this proposed subdivision and limits development to what was proposed with the previous development plan. Unless it is replatted at some point in the future, so that the purpose of the plat note is to tie the concurrent development plan application to the proposed subdivision. So these go together. The subdivision has been reviewed with compliant, for compliance with each applicable Article Six standard. And it's also understood that they go together, that they inform one another. So if a final plat consistent with this approval were to be recorded and the development plan that was just approved or recommended for approval were to later default, what would happen at that time is that a future developer would be required to go through the subdivision and development plan process. So it would just come right back to where we are today. If this particular development was to not come to fruition for whatever reason. So to address the, the variances to refresh you and some that were not with us at that time. Variance number one is to usable lot area. Staff supports this variance request because purpose statements of the subdivision standards to promote orderly growth, ensure subdivisions are efficient and orderly and promote community plan goals are furthered. Staff also supports this variance request because easements encumber a significant amount of the property and appropriate access, emergency access will be achieved as well as affordable housing, if approved. Variance number two is to the length of the proposed access easement that bisects lot 1A and 1B. The standard requires that easements not exceed 100 feet. The applicant's proposing an easement that's about 222 feet long over lot 1A and about 385 feet long over lot 1B. Staff supports this request because it furthers the same purpose statements of the subdivision standards as I outlined a moment ago. And also because varying the length of the access easement allows the applicant to achieve the purpose of section 426. That's our access section. The standard is to ensure safe and efficient, efficient access to development as well as standard C2 from that section that property owners shall provide access easements as identified in the access control plan. Steph. Yeah. Steph finds that the proposed easements, they facilitate the long-term achievement of the access control plan while trying to balance the needs of private development and the community. Overall, Steph finds the preliminary plat and major variance criteria is met and supports subdivision recommending approval with conditions, and we have not received any written public comment in opposition or support. Happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thanks very much. Questions from commissioners?
For staff, under variance number one, variance request number one, lot two, leave wetlands, undesigned it to allow for a limited future development per plat notes 12, 13, 14, 10, 10. I don't know if I could figure out what those plat notes were actually meaning. What exactly does that mean either potentially? Yeah. What does that mean?
Yeah. So plat note, let's see. Want to make sure I address the same things you're asking about. Okay, so the plat notes that are included. We have plat note. I'm sorry, remind me which ones you would like me to go through?
Pardon me?
Which plat notes you wanted me to?
Tried reading them. You have to go to the last page of what's referred to in your staff report is 10, 12, 13 and 14.
And 12, 13, 14. Okay, cool. Okay. So lot plat note 10 says all of lot two, Mid Valley Housing is subject to a public access dedicated by this plat. So there are limits on the type of development that can occur there. Plat note 12, lot two is designated as open space in accordance with section 602L of the Community Development Code. Lot two shall be developed in accordance with this section and shall remain accessible for the use of residents of the housing development on lot 1A and lot B in perpetuity. So that's limiting any development of lot two now to access or open space as outlined in Article Six and Section 421. They're almost identical. And what that means is open space that's designated with subdivisions and development plans, it can only be used for the purposes of open space. So for the passive enjoyment of the residents of that subdivision. So there's a minute, okay, and then I'll keep going. And then plat note 13 talks about, I'll read it to you. A public access easement is dedicated across lot two to allow for future public roadway connection to be constructed by others between Mount Warner and Pine Grove, as recommended in the access control plan. Development of the public roadway across lot two shall not reduce the amount of open space below the minimum required. And it says the number of square feet is 29,315.88. So, and then 14 says that lot A and lot 1B are subject to development rights per the development plan. And that the parcel may not be sold or developed other than in accordance with that development plan unless platted in accordance with the CDC. So all of those together are saying that lot two is to be used for access.
and open space. That's the only things it can be used for. And within those two categories, it's open space significantly limits what is allowed to occur there. So that's what, that, that's, yeah, I hope that that helps.
No, it does. Uh, I just found the language in the plat notes a little overwhelming for me. But with open space, you are allowed to put buildings on open space if they serve open space. Is that correct? It's not, you know, it's not, open, open space is not prohibit buildings, unless I'm mistaken. No, I'm not mistaken.
One more, please.
Yeah, like building.
Let me read you the first standard of the open space section. Land area in a subdivision shall be designated and used for open space conservation, active or passive parks, or amenity space for the benefit of residents of the subdivision. I don't read that to include buildings.
Did you say amenity?
Amenity space.
Amenity space.
Um, I mean, yeah, I guess in some, you know, like very limited. I mean, yeah, please.
I was going to say, I, I don't know that there would always be, that buildings would always be precluded from open space, but I think the minimum area to meet the code standards, you couldn't put a building on. Is that perhaps what that's saying?
Yeah, I mean, if there were a building, it would have to, you know, meet a variety of other standards in the development plan. I mean,
And it wouldn't be open space.
This is a subdivision standard, I guess is what I'm saying. And typically we don't have buildings with subdivision standards.
Right.
The development plan standards read the same way. Um, I, yeah, I, I agree with Rebecca. I think that the plat is pretty clearly setting aside a minimum amount of open space, regardless of how the access is developed in the future.
Minimum amount of open space is something determined by the overall project or by the, the amount of open space that we're designating it? Because we have a, I didn't see a comparison that says that they're right at the limit or the, the minimum requirement for open space. They could have some leeway in the amount of open space that is required and how much they're providing.
It exceeds the minimum.
Right, which gives them some leeway to disturb some.
Right, but these plat notes further limit how it can be used.
Hmm.
That's the point of them, because they, they are further restricting this area beyond what the code would require.
Okay.
Yeah, I, we're, we're totally on board with the sort of like additional guardrails. So if you look at the allowable uses within the OR zone district, like, you know, you, you could have some like sports facility there or, you know, the sports barn or something, you know what I mean? We're figuring.
I, I just wanted to clarify, the OR zone district is not what these plat notes are referring to. They're referring to the open space standards and the subdivision, so they're just, they're different.
Right, right.
Drawing a comparison between use.
Provide more, I would say, restriction on the use than what the, what is allowed with, by the zoning is what I'm trying to say. Um, and so we're, and we're comfortable with that, like, it's wetlands. We don't really want to mess with that. We want it to be sort of a natural amenity for, for our residents. And so we're comfortable with that additional restriction on there, um, that, that the plat notes provide.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Nope, seen none. There is still no public comment, so we will skip the public comment portion. Jason, unless you had any final follow-up on this, or Kelly?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. I'll close the public portion, come to commissioners for discussion and a motion.
Uh, go ahead and make a motion to pass project code PL which is two oh two, three, zero, zero, three, three. And it's two, five variances. Thank you.
Conditions?
Conditions.
Hmm. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Not hearing much. It's not a lot to talk about. We've already talked about this preliminary plat.
Did, got to get access.
Yep. Seems very provable. In that case, I'll call, I'll call for a vote. Sounds good.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye.
Yes. Yeah.
Aye.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Do we have a, Rich's report this evening?
Um, I have a few things to note. Um, Brian and, uh, Rich know this already, but we had an area plan coordinating committee this afternoon. And staff is going to begin work to develop a scope of work for the Steamboat Springs area community plan update or rewrite, whenever we want to call that. Um, and we, our, our goal would be to be under contract with a consultant team by the end of this year, twenty twenty-three. So we're going to have a busy second half of the year. Um, I also wanted to note that city council is holding a special meeting next Tuesday, August one, to hear presentations from the housing authorities, development partners, um, and to discuss some of the remaining issues, uh, points of negotiation on the Brown Ranch annexation, um, with the housing authorities negotiating team. So if you're interested in that, um, tune into the August first meeting at five o'clock. Um, I also wanted to know, the staff will be, has a placeholder set on council's September nineteenth agenda to provide counsel with an update and, um, solicit further direction on the Housing Opportunity Strategic Plan. I know we had a work session where our consultants presented some of that, some, some of that information to you all, and we received your feedback. So again, just kind of noting to, um, let you know how to continue to follow that work. If you're interested, we'll certainly, um, share that information with you all that we intend to present to council. But wanted to get that on your radar. And then lastly, I'm going to share my screen really quick. Um, we are starting to work on a number of reports that we intend to make available to the public with regard to short-term rental licenses. Um, and so we, there is a page on the STR website, on our, the city's website that is dedicated to data and reporting. So that page is now, um, live. This is the only report that's on there. This is what I'm calling for the time being a summary report. Um, and it's, it's not showing the whole picture yet, but it's just giving the data that we have readily available now. So just kind of wanted to show you what we intend to do. There will be a series of these reports that will all be publicly available. Um, but this one was published on Monday. You can see the numbers of this first table is issued STR licenses. So you can see the numbers that we have issued in the different, uh, zones. I can zoom in a little bit so you can actually see that. Um, and the types of licenses that we're issuing in those zones, you know, the three types being the short term and all the hosted and the temporary. And then the second table right underneath of that are the total number of applications that we have received so far. How many of those have been issued, canceled, denied, and how many we still have pending? And then I think, um, these pie charts tell a really nice, easy to understand story. Eighty-one percent of the issued licenses so far fall in the green zone. Um, thirteen, a pretty significant chunk fall in the red prohibited zones and six percent fall in the yellow, which is not really surprising, because our, the, the six yellow zones are pretty small um, in comparison to the red. Um, so I think that's why you see kind of a significant difference in the numbers there. And then overall, on the right-hand side, again, we've reviewed sixty-three percent. I'm sorry, we've issued sixty-three percent of the license, total license applications that we've received so far. We've only denied three, so you can't even see that slice of the pie. Um, seventy-nine have been canceled. Um, we've seen a lot of duplicate applications. A lot of people don't know, don't take the time to understand how to upload additional information when their application isn't complete. So they just apply for another, you know, or, or some other situation happens there. So, um, those canceled, um, about eighty applications have been canceled. Um, and then the eight hundred and forty-four that are still pending. So much, a good chunk of those have been reviewed. We just may be waiting for additional information or corrections or updates to their documents. So we are plugging along. Just wanted to give you an update on that, and I'll try to share some more reports as we get them so we can start tracking data, complaint data, um, license data, enforcement data, that kind of thing. And that is all I have.
Yep, thanks for all the info. We also have, uh, single meeting minutes to approve tonight. This is May twenty-fifth, public hearing. Uh, believe all of us we're here. Or maybe, sorry Gavin, you probably weren't, but everybody else was here. Are there any changes or can we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And, right, I think I saw that, right? That's our only one? So that's it for us tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Move to adjourn.
Two motions, I'll take one of those as a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thanks, we're adjourned at six twenty.
Thank you.